Good evening. I'd like you, I'd like, good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the Board of Selectmen meeting. I'm calling to order the Board of Selectmen meeting. Today is July 12th at 7:00 PM. A little bit. I'd like to welcome you all to the Board of Selectmen meeting. Today is July 12th at 7:00 PM. I'm calling the meeting to order. If everybody could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So first we'll take public comment. If anybody's here for public comment. No? Okay. So I believe we're going to take out of order and we're going to recognize our Purple Heart recipients first.
Madam Chair. Thank you for giving veteran services comprising of Army Veteran Jillian Kemp and myself and the town of North Andover the opportunity to not only honor our veterans, but in particular those wounded and killed in action from North Andover. Here tonight from Military Order of the Purple Heart is Kirk Power to give a presentation on the Purple Heart. We've identified five recipients, four of which are here with us tonight, actually three of which are here tonight. Robert Turner, David Swabrick, Patrick Dennehy, Jack Garvin, and Stephen Grazo. As of right now, Mr. Dennehy and Mr. Grazo are not here with us tonight. We'll connect with him at a later date. We then have citations from State Senator Bruce Starr and Diana DeZagio's office, as well as State Representative Christina Mende Cucho and Tran Nguyen. Lastly, we would ask Madam Chair to read the proclamation declaring North Andover Purple Heart Community.
How you doing, folks? I just want to say first off, it's a real honor to be here tonight. I do very much respect the schedule and I know that things are tight here. So I just want to say thank you so much to all of you here that have served and thank you so much to the town of North Andover for your support of America's combat wounded veterans. Thank you.
So at this time, we have citations and again, we only have three members here with us today. So if we could get Bobby Turner, David Swabrick, and Jack Garvin to post up, please. Representative.
Gentlemen, congratulations and thank you for your service of the country, your bravery, your valor, your sacrifice. Thank you. Thank you. Good to see you. All right. So right on over here, please. We have Mr. Swabrick. That's for you. Also, we have a citation here from the Governor and Lieutenant Governor as well.
Thank you.
For recognizing.
Mr. Turner is on the phone.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Turner.
Yes. No, I was just trying to get him all straight in the way. I'm also trying to get Mary Ann position to take pictures. Yeah, why don't we, we need to involve the board in this. Let's see, we have three. Could we ask the, oh, you have citations as well. So when we do that, maybe we can do a photo op. We were thinking we'd like to get the board involved. So maybe if we come into the well and you guys stand around and we all stand around it, will that work? All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you so much for your service. And I'm just going to read our proclamation from the town. The Military Order of the Purple Heart, Town of North Andover Proclamation. Whereas the people of the North Andover have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the citizens of our community who have selflessly served in the armed forces that has been vital in maintaining the freedom and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. Whereas citizens of our community have been killed in action while serving in the armed forces and have posthumously awarded the Purple Heart for their ultimate sacrifice. And whereas citizens of our community have been awarded the Purple Heart for their bodily sacrifice of being wounded by the hand of the enemy while engaged in combat. And whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest American military decoration and was created as the badge of military merit made of the purple cloth in the shape of a heart with the word "merit" sewed upon it on August 7th, 1782, in Newburgh, New York, by General George Washington, then reestablished as the Purple Heart on February 22nd, 1932, by General Douglas MacArthur. And whereas the heritage it represents is sacred to those who know the price paid to wear the Purple Heart. And whereas August 7th is nationally recognized as Purple Heart Day. And now therefore be it proclaimed, we, the North Andover Select Board, hereby proclaim North Andover, Massachusetts, a Purple Heart Community, honoring the service and sacrifice of those from our community who were awarded the Purple Heart while serving in our nation's wars. And also be it proclaimed that North Andover, Massachusetts will recognize August 7th annually as Purple Heart Day and urge our citizens and organizations to display the American flag as well as other public expressions of recognition and appreciation of our Purple Heart recipients. I just want to thank you all for your service and the ultimate sacrifice that was paid by all of you and those that can't be here with us. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. Is it okay if we stage a photo here? All right, gentlemen?
In front, in the entire or back?
On top.
Five seconds late.
How can we make that way? Can we do the picture one more time?
Get the face. It's like the Beatles, they're not getting back together.
Probably, she went by the, I mean, if we took everything in order, she'd probably be right on time. Is everyone still here?
I will entertain a motion to accept the proclamation for the Purple Heart Day.
I'll second that.
Just got to read it for us so nice and formally on the record. Move that the Select Board proclaim August 7th as Purple Heart Day in North Andover and further proclaim that the Purple Heart flag be flown at the Town Common on August 7th. Hereon.
Hereon, yes. I'll second that.
Excellent. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
All right. Ready to get the fight of common in?
Well.
One of our veterans is a farmer.
We need a bigger, we need a bigger slickwood roof, right?
Need a bigger boat roof.
See?
Oh, so sweet.
I know. It's killing me. They are so cute. They can be. And I said, I have a puppy. A little one.
No, just one.
Do you stay here?
You have to go bleachers. Guess so. We'll take a half, a couple of halfings to start off in here, right?
Is that everybody?
We do.
Is that everybody? No, it's still coming? Almost?
Nobody won't be in shorts. Want to quit? Should we go behind him?
Yes.
Fit.
We're happy to make one.
All right. I think we have everybody chief. Yes? All right. So we will be moving on to the swearing in of our two newest new firefighters.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So tonight, we have two members of our department who have passed their probationary period. Brief history for you at the North Andover Fire Department. When you're hired, you're put on probation for a one-year period. During that time, there's a five-week training program internal where they're on days and they go through a rigorous training program with daily assignments, a lot of follow-up and review. Following that, they're assigned to a shift and then they end up going to the Fire Academy, go through the program at the Mass Fire Academy. Upon completing that and successful reviews from their supervisors, we get to where we are now where we have two members who have done outstanding job and we're here to have them have their badges. We don't assign out badges in the North Andover Fire Department until after that one-year probationary period. So another history we have at the Fire Department is we reuse badges. They have some history to them instead of just assigning new ones. So what I'm going to do briefly is I'm going to read the name of the first recipient. I'm going to read the history of the badge and our town clerk, Dawn, will swear them in, okay? So the first one is badge number 16. It's given to Kevin Smertelny. Close? We practice this in the hall. Okay, badge number 16 is issued to permanent firefighter Kevin Smertelny. Having successfully completed your probationary year today as of June 6th, 2021. Badge 16 was first worn by firefighter Edward McElhun from 1962 to 1992. In 1992, firefighter Steve Carpenter transferred from Malden Fire and wore badge 16 until his retirement in 2008. John McCarthy wore that badge 16 from 2008 till his promotion to Lieutenant in 2020. We trust that you will wear badge 12 with pride and honor with the knowledge that those who came before you have worked to make the job better for you and that you are entrusted to remember that those who came before you were harmony with whom you work and prepare the way for those who come after you.
I state your name.
I, Kevin Smertelny.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to.
And allegiance to.
The Town of North Andover.
The Town of North Andover.
The Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
And that I will support.
And that I will support.
The bylaws and constitution.
The bylaws and constitution.
thereof.
thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I swear.
I swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
The duties incumbent on me.
The duties incumbent on me.
As a firefighter.
As a firefighter.
For the Town of North Andover.
For the Town of North Andover.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
To the rules and regulations.
To the rules and regulations.
Of the Town of North Andover.
Of the Town of North Andover.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. Kevin's girlfriend Lucy is going to put his badge on now. Okay, our second firefighter who's going to be sworn in tonight is Sarah Capuano. Sarah's going to have badge 33. 33 was issued to permanent firefighter Sarah Capuano after successfully completing her probationary year also on July 6th of this year. Firefighter James Daw Jr. previously wore this badge 33 from 1972 to 1976 when he took his father's badge 6 upon his retirement. In 1976, firefighter Stephen Long received this badge and wore badge 33 until his retirement in 2006. Firefighter Jeffrey Crosby was given badge 33 and he wore it until he was promoted in 2020 to Lieutenant. We trust that you will wear badge 33 with pride and honor with the knowledge that those who came before you have worked to make the job better for you and you are entrusted to remember those who came before you, work in harmony with whom you work and prepare the way for those who come after you. Congratulations, Sarah.
I state your name.
I, Sarah Capuano.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to.
And allegiance to.
The Town of North Andover.
The Town of North Andover.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The United States of America.
The United States of America.
And that I will support.
And that I will support.
The bylaws and constitution thereof.
The bylaws of constitution thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I swear.
I swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
The duties incumbent on me.
The duties incumbent on me.
As a firefighter.
As a firefighter.
For the Town of North Andover.
For the Town of North Andover.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
To the rules and regulations.
To the rules and regulations.
Of the Town of North Andover.
Of the Town of North Andover.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Sarah.
Thank you. We want to congratulate you. We know that you guys have worked so hard to get here and we wish you a long, safe and healthy career with the North Andover Fire Department. Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Sarah.
Oh, high pitch.
Yeah, we're going out somewhere. I saw it on the calendar. She hasn't told.
Have a good evening. Thank you now.
Something to Dave and to Joe. If they'd stop talking. Dave and Joe, I really wanted to say this earlier, but it just, everything flowed. Thank you so much for bringing this Purple Heart to North Andover. I just love it. It's, and you could see it meant a lot to these gentlemen. Means a lot to all of us. I'm sorry?
We got them good.
Yeah.
They thought they were just coming here to, you know, be part of the force, not really single call.
Oh, we did not know that. That's great. Thank you so much. Yeah, they're, they often are difficult. They don't like the limelight, even of all the good things that they've done, yeah.
I mean, we had to do outreach, really. There were only two of the recipients I know personally. Unless the folks come in the office, there's just no way for me to know every, what is on every veteran's record. So we had to do outreach for about a month.
I'd love to, at some point, or maybe you could have it for the newspapers as a bio on our Purple Heart people.
I had originally planned on doing a roll call of every veteran who's been wounded or killed in action going back to the French Indian War.
Wow.
And that was with the Historical Society. But then I was like, all right, this is, couldn't be too much. It was turning into a ceremony and we didn't want to go too. But we do have those names, so at a later date.
There's Stevens from the Civil War.
Oh, yeah.
Dave Rubens, the Chair of the Patriotic Observance Committee. I'm sorry. Him and I collaborate on a lot of stuff, so we talk and shop. Yeah, at some point, we'll probably be looking to do something.
That sounds great. I know that there's a group though that's looking to put on video our past 375 years. So that might be, it might not all be done by the end of this 375th year, but I'll bet you they would be very interested in. I think that'd be great if we could do that.
We have been talking to Brian Howard, the incoming director at the Historical Society.
Okay.
He's tracking.
He's tracking. Military term. I've learned it from hanging around with these guys. Oh, I'm tracking that. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Appreciate it.
And oh, another member of the committee as well.
Mr. John Thompson.
So we've cleared the room, but nobody wanted to stay for our end of year budget transfer, but that is the next item on our agenda.
So the Finance Director is here to answer any questions. Typically, you do not see this number of budget transfers at the end of the year or if there are budget transfers, they're usually something that we are able to do within our budgetary clusters. Due to COVID, we really saw a lot of transfers. It's not surprising, if you remember correctly, at the beginning of the fiscal year, we had the spending freeze on under the MOU. At the end of the fiscal year, we had another spending freeze on because we were anticipating that we were going to have deficit in some accounts, which we do. And so basically, what this does is balance the budget and at the end, we actually are returning $400,000, which will roll into free cash for the next fiscal year. It is great. Better than we thought we were going to be, so.
Yes. Yes, very good. Sometimes know how hard that is to do.
Yes. And what I will say is this is just closing out fiscal year '21. Fiscal year '22, we'll start again, but this is just closing out the fiscal year '21 money. Excellent.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I guess the only thing I would add is that there's still monies that are anticipated from the federal government in terms of follow-up on top of this too for expenses. So I think that's important for folks to understand.
Right. So we have received $1.9 million so far. That money is to be spent during fiscal year '22. It can be spent for up to a five-year period, a total of $9.3 million. And while some of this is COVID expenses that we're talking about today, some of it's not. So you're in the Fire Department, overtime, et cetera. But yes, we'll have additional funds to spend in future years coming from the federal government as part of the Opera Funds.
Thank you, Lynn.
She did a great job. It's been not easy to reconcile, so.
If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I will move the Board of Selectmen to approve the FYI 21 budget reallocations as presented.
I'll second. A motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, passes 5-0. Okay, yes, do you want to know?
Do you want to do it first, or one?
There you go.
Thank you.
Live. We're doing this live, you know, it's been a while since we've done stuff live.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Lynn, appreciate it. Okay, so our next item on the agenda is to execute the purchase and sale agreement for, with Minco for the senior center, long time coming.
Yeah.
Very exciting.
Very exciting, looking forward to it.
We do have Town Council with us to answer any questions about the purchase and sale agreement, as well as the deeds and easements, as you know, we've been working for a very long time to get this to where it is today, we have drafted some motions for you that have protective language for the town as we move forward, we're hoping to close fairly soon, so that's exciting as well, there are two changes to the deed that you're not seeing, one is the dates, because obviously they say April, and we're no longer in April, just showed you how much work happens behind the scenes as we're doing these things, and additionally, the second part is that there's a credit of $75,000 to go towards us doing some site work, which either Andrew or Suzanne can answer questions on, if you have any, but that's reflected in the purchase and sale agreement as well. Really just want to thank all of you for your diligence and hard work on, from all parties, for many, many months to move this forward, so it does not go unnoticed, and we are appreciative. Andrew said he had all around here when he got here. You just jumped right in.
Yeah, I'd also like to thank the Minco family for the donation to the town, and we're really looking forward to the signing and being all ready to go.
Can I take the motion, Madam Chair?
Could I just ask a question, because it's, I think on everybody's mind, okay, we got the purchase and sales done, we're signing it now on, so can you?
So.
Quick, general.
We'll close, which will be great, and we hope that that's actually very soon, and as part of that closing, Minco will receive their permits to begin their project, and Andrew has already instructed our contractors to begin our permit documentation, and so we'll start applying for our permits, as you know, we already bid this project last May, and have had a contractor in place since then, so we have been pretty much ready to go, so as soon as we close, we will be able to get the permits filed for.
That's really exciting.
Great.
Very exciting. Shows some very positive progress.
Yes, we're excited.
Yes, I think everybody's looking forward to seeing some new stuff being, taking place in town. I'll entertain a motion.
Having said that, move the board, the Select Board persuade into Article 8 of the 2018 Annual Town Meeting, accept the deed for 477 and 505 Sutton Street, North Andover, as presented, and to authorize Town Council to release the acceptance of the deed at closing upon completion of all necessary conditions. So this is another motion.
Should we do one at a time? Do you have any issue with them doing them collectively?
I have an issue. No, you can do it all.
Collectively, okay.
Okay. Move that the Select Board persuade into Article 12 of the 2020 Annual Town Meeting, enter into an executive, excuse me, and execute the purchase and sale agreement as presented on condition that all necessary conditions completed, and authorize Town Council to release the agreement at the closing. And finally, move that the Select Board persuade into Article 12 of the 2020 Town Meeting, accept the deed for 1 and 3 Surrey Drive, as presented and authorized, Town Council, release the acceptance of the deed at closing of the purchase of the property upon completion of all necessary conditions.
I'll second those motions.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. And Madam Chair, we would be remiss if we didn't recognize Jean, who's not here, but Andrew, Suzanne, and Jean have been a trio on this, and so we'd be remiss if we didn't recognize Jean, who's been, been working on this the longest, Suzanne might say it's been her, but, so thank you to Jean, who's not here today with us.
She has been a bright from day one.
Yes, thank you for all your hard work. Thank you for everything. You know, everybody's excited to see some movement on that site, and we're all looking forward to a brand new senior center.
And it makes us feel like things are back to normal.
Moving forward, moving in the right direction. That's great, and the other thing is not to be just like, you could sign all the documents by the end of the evening, I don't need them right now.
So you just come one copy or?
Oh, okay.
We'll need them.
Alright, I'll jump up with Lori and then at the end. Okay, great, thank you. Thank you. Alright. We will be moving on to appointments for our volunteer committees, would you like to?
So. I would like to move that we appoint Tim Sheerhart to the Community Preservation Committee for a term that ends June 30th, 2022, you and I had the opportunity to meet with him, and while it was a very hard decision in a very popular spot, we're really looking forward to Tim serving in that capacity on the committee, so, can I do both at once first?
I'll second that.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, and then we have another appointment for the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee.
I would also move that the Select Board appoint Marinette Henry to the Commission on Diversity, Equality, and Inclusion for a term ending June 30th, 2023, again, we had the opportunity to meet with her and felt as though her willingness to jump right in and be part of that board was a huge asset to our community, so we're looking forward to it.
She just, she opened her own business in town, was it a year ago, so I think that she will have a lot to add to the board, and yeah, so it'll be good. I'll second that. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
I must say, Tim, it's good to have you back at work, you took that retirement from the FinCom.
I was thinking the same thing.
Pulled him back in, so go to work, Tim.
That's right, bring him back in. And I think, Dick, you always welcome them.
I, okay, well, I think the volunteer form, just reading it again for the first, for the first time or for many times, but it says, good government starts with you on a volunteer form, and I think that's so true, that, you know, this town runs smoothly, and it really operates in the way that it does because we have so many great people who are willing to step up and serve the town, so we just want to thank you all, the new people, Tim's not new, he's been on other boards before, but Marinette, thank you very much, and all those who serve, thank you for your time that you take to make this town a great place to live and work and play, so thank you.
Yes, it is quite amazing how many volunteers it takes to run the town, and we're so lucky to have so many people committed to volunteering their time.
Oh, my goodness.
So, thank you. So, next, I will entertain a motion to move inter-licensing.
A move that we move to open a meeting of the North Andover Licensing Commission.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I will pass it over, back to you.
Thank you, crowd gets smaller and smaller. Okay, well first, tonight, we've got a request from Ashley Piazza of Smolak Farms for one-day wine and malt liquor license on July 14th, 2021, and from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM for a Wim farm, for a Wim dinner in the event tent, we've got a full memorandum in our packet regarding this with the sign-off from Building Fire Health, I do note that the Police Department said, Police Department is not requiring a detail for this event, so it's nice to kind of have their affirmation right with these, is there any, any other comments to this for folks?
I, I spoke with Madam Town Manager about the police detail, because we've been requiring it for night events, but where the Wim dinner is more of a restaurant-type thing, and it's not as, it's only like 90 to 100 people, so.
It's not a wedding.
It's not a wedding, and that's why the Police Department feels that we don't need a police detail.
Okay, that's, I appreciate the clarification.
The caterer that night is Tuckaway Tavern, I just wish I could go, but I can't.
The next one, the next one, so I'll hear a motion if we're all set?
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We passed 5-0, all set for, for the, for the evening, the next is a request from Tricia Dunphy of Smolak Farms for one-day wine and malt liquor license and waiver of the police detail for fundraiser on August 8th, 2021, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM in the event tent. Please, I was going to say, if we've got somebody here to speak to it, that'd be great. Thank you.
Go ahead.
It's all yours, go ahead. So I work at Smolak Farms as well, I'm their Activities Manager, but I'm also running the Boston Marathon for a charity called Family Reach, which provides emergency funding for cancer patients and their families, and Smolak has donated the tent and food, and I just have to buy the liquor, so I'm applying for the license.
Okay, that's great, and you're, where the invites to this, just tell us maybe a little bit more about who you're inviting to this.
Sure, so mostly it's family and friends, people that I work with, other people that I'm running the marathon with, that work for Family Reach, so I'm going to send out the invitations to them, I obviously have waited until I got the okay from you guys, but yeah, it's going to be hopefully about 100 people, there will be live music, which I wanted to be transparent about in case I needed a police detail, so, you know, it's not going to be a rowdy crowd, but, you know, it's not going to be a sit-down dinner like Wim, so.
I understand. Any questions from the board?
I think it falls within the entertainment license of Smolak, so it's not an issue. For me, anyway.
It sounds like a great event, thank you for setting that up for the people that really need it.
Yeah, it's a wonderful charity, it's very close to my heart, so.
Good for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll move.
I would move approval, thank you. You can say it.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're all set?
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Just a clarity for the minute, are we leaving the detail?
Yes, yes. Thank you, appreciate that, Madam Town Manager. Alright, and next, we have a request of Kate Bevino of the Stevens Coolidge House and Gardens for one-day wine and malt license and waiver of police details for the following events, this is continued from our discussion, our last meeting, or from the 6th of June, so it'd be for the summer picnic concerts on August 6th, the 20th, the 27th of 2021, from 5 to 8:00 PM, for the community picnic on August 29th, 2021, from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and for the third annual Oktoberfest on October 25th, 2021, from noon to 8:00 PM. And we had, I think, invited Kate to, to talk to us about this, she did write us a letter, which is part of the public record, and Madam Town Manager, was there somebody here that was going to be able to speak to it, or?
I believe Kate said someone was attending, and he's back there.
Wonderful, please join us. If you just introduce yourself, yeah, great.
Yeah, I think the, I think the letter explained in the original application, it's a continuation for the August dates, for the summer concert series, the community day, and then the Oktoberfest in September, so we're working with individual vendors that would provide alcohol, as well as food vendors and sweets vendors for all the concert series, that's a Friday night, the music is a 6 to 8:00 PM, the event itself is a 5 to 8:00 PM range, and then the, the community day is just an all-day event, I believe, for that one notch, brewing would be on property, as well as some food vendors, coffee, and probably ice cream, and then for Oktoberfest, it's also a notch that we're working with again, who we worked with two years ago and the year before that, on the same event.
Do you limit the tickets, or is, did I read somewhere that you're?
Yeah, for the summer concert series, where it'll be 200, which is well below the Father's Day, just a couple weeks ago, that we had, the numbers that were there, the parking lot that we have seems to be, was adequate for Father's Day at that, at those levels, and the, we have the overflow parking that could be active now, well, if it stops raining, but yes.
And then the all-day events, is it a time ticket, or?
The all-day events are drop-in, because it's, the, the community day is a drop-in, residents of North Andover get in free if you show your ID, so that's more of a drop-in, the Oktoberfest is a ticketed event, yes.
I know there'd been some discussion, the last time we talked about noise levels and so forth, and the town did some follow-through, am I correct?
We did, Mr. Chair, so in the packet, starting on page 2, there is a memo from the Public Health Director, Brian LaGrasse, to me, dated June 30th, and so what Brian did was, I think we mentioned, he borrowed a decibel meter from the Department of Environmental Protection, and he went to the site on numerous days to take the ambient noise level, and so he did that on 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 6 times, and he actually typically does it from the Butters' property, but you can see his different locations on his forms, during the ambient noise survey time period, the average decibels were ranging from 56.5 to the highest of 61, interestingly, the, the highest one was actually on a Wednesday at 3:30, which I find interesting, because he took one of them at commuting time, which was Tuesday at 5:25, and that was actually lower, and then what he did was he went back to the same site during the event on Father's Day, and he did the noise results there as well, and so he did that, one at 5:45 PM, and then again at 6:30 PM from two different sites, and the event readings were 60.7 decibels and 60.2 decibels, and in order for it to be a noise nuisance, it needs to be 10 decibels above the ambient level, and so his findings were that there was no noise nuisance at that time, at this point, we did have to give DEP back the machine, because another community wanted to use it, but we will borrow it back again, in order to do additional spot checks over the summer, and we did let Stevens Coolidge, as well as the Butters, know that.
That's, we really appreciate, I think that's kind of one of the ongoing concerns, you know, we all have our, we talked earlier tonight, before the meeting started, about, Lori and I, about perception, and, you know, we have visual and we have audio perceptions, and I can appreciate that, you know, neighbors have some concerns, but really having these facts, I think is helpful, and hopefully kind of bring again more comfort of, kind of relationship between the neighbors, the community, and, and the state.
I think the last time that we met, we specifically asked Kate to reach out to the neighbors who we've repeatedly heard from, to my knowledge, that hasn't happened, so can you speak to that, or, because it's, I mean, it's two families that we hear from regularly.
Yes, yeah.
You know, I followed up with them, and when I did that, they had not heard from Kate, so.
So I think the, yeah, it might be a breakdown, I don't know, I don't know personally, but maybe a breakdown in leadership, we've had some staff changes recently, with the director change, and we're working with an off-site vice president, so there's some, some leadership there, that we're working through in terms of communicating things hourly with the community, but I could follow up with Kate and.
Yeah, I mean, I, I want to approve, we want this to happen, but I, I think it would just, we, we've said it, we'll say it again, I mean, it would go a very long way to have specific discussion with those neighbors about how you can be good neighbors.
Right, yeah.
I do think, though, that the community day, somebody heard that, it is a nice offering to the town, though. It's great. It is really great, and the nice thing about it, people will come, and you never know that some of them could end up being members and seeing all the wonderful things there too, so I think it works out very nicely for everybody, so thank you for that, I think that's a big step.
We did, so on Memorial Day weekend was the first North Andover date, and that was, people did come, but we're rescheduling that one as well for later in July, so we can double down.
You know, August 29th is not North Andover, right, it's another.
Right, yeah, I think that, April, so, yeah.
Okay, I didn't catch that, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's just kind of, read it out what Janice said. We're just really hoping that you guys will reach out to the neighbors and, um, you know, you're sharing space, really.
Right.
And you have a few, you really have a few Abutters, right? There's only a couple that are, um, really adjacent to your property. Um, and we want you to have a long, good standing relationship with those that surround. Um, so that would just be what we are trying to convey.
There was, um, and speaking to the neighbors, there, there was an additional meeting with, um, Abutters on Old Village Lane regarding water and stormwater and drainage and-
Yeah.
-some of those issues as well. So, that we, we've had some communication with additional Abutters.
Yeah.
The two in particular, I don't think it's gone, but we'll get there.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Great. I just wanna, you know, thank the Health Department in North Andover and Brian LaGrasse for going out and taking all these readings. That's a considerable amount of time and effort in, that they put in to get all these readings and to, and to put together this report, which is really eye-opening because it seems like, you know, on a Wednesday afternoon at three-thirty, the noise level's higher than during one of the events.
Is that the last thing of school or anything like that?
I can speak to that, I think. In theory, I can speak to that. Wednesday, we're closed and we do the bulk of our mowing and string trimming on Wednesdays.
Oh, okay.
So, it was late in the day, but it would, could have been late to-
There we go. Well, that's, that's a, that's a reasonable answer, isn't it?
Brian did tell me that, um, the majority of the noise that he heard was really birds and cars. That that was really the majority of what, of the, the noise seemed, the ambient was coming from, so.
What are you doing to the birds?
They're happy.
They're nesting, or they were, yeah. They're done this week. They're fledging, so.
Oh, oh, there's a real reason. I was joking.
He said you're putting something in their bird feed.
Brian said he's happy to go back anytime as a food truck, so, um, we'll have to send him back on another mission, but.
It is, it is interesting, though.
Yeah, we're very appreciative. Took time on Father's Day to go, so we're very appreciative that he did that.
Yep, absolutely.
Any other questions? Uh, otherwise, we can proceed with the motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of the licensing as requested. Um, do you want me to go through each one of them or they've already been read? So, as read, as previously read.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Are we gonna keep the police detail? I would for any of the night events.
Yeah, I think that's kind of a running.
So, the summer picnic concerts, five to eight.
I think, in that fair especially, we should have it in case.
Yeah, and especially the Oktoberfest, twelve to eight.
Yeah, that one, definitely.
Yeah, so August sixth, twenty twenty-seven, and then September twenty-fifth. I would keep the police details in for those.
Maintain the police.
And I will second that.
Okay.
Part of your amendment.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll move we move on licensing.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, moving right along. We will, um, go to our consent items. We have an affordable unit resale, um, on two-ten Chickering Road, Unit one oh three A. Um, we typically write a first refusal, right?
Yes, we have a first refusal. We are letting, um, the affordable housing group do it instead of us, Chappa.
So, I'll, I'll move that the, a select board waive the right of first refusal for the property at two-ten Chickering Road, Unit one oh three A.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The pass is five zero. Uh, and next, we will move on to the approval of our, um, June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one open session meeting minutes. Does anyone have any additions, changes, comments?
Okay, look good. I'm sure I'll move approval.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Moving right along. That has, that passes five zero. Um, we don't have any old business. And we will move on to the Town Manager's Report.
Sure, a few quick things. We do have three COVID cases right now. I believe two of them are falling off tomorrow, so we'll be way back down to one. Um, it's good news. Yep. August third is going to be National Night Out at the middle school. Um, unfortunately, I will not be here because I'm taking a vacation, so Laurie's gonna have to go for me, just finding out. But, yeah, so August third is gonna be National Night Out. The, um, Police Department is very busy planning that. Our summer concert series is back, so just to remind people, the kids' summer concerts are Tuesdays and Thursdays. And on Sunday evenings, late afternoon, we do have the family ones again. We had a hundred and twenty people, I believe, at the one this Sunday. Um, things is going really well at the pond. We actually have had the best testing that we've had in like a ten-year period.
It's all the rain.
The rain actually makes it worse. It's the air raider. It's so exciting. We're really, yeah, the air raider and then they're all still running the dog down there. So, we haven't seen any geese. Uh, it's been really exciting. So, we're really all feeling very confident about that.
They're running the dog. Okay, so which dog is that?
We're running Gibbs down there. That's one of the, um, the Gibbs, the, um, yeah, one of the, he's our therapy dog. He's running down there in the morning, so if there's any geese, he scares them away.
If he needs a call-in, I have a very sweet bird dog, a cocker spaniel will take her down.
Well, it keeps, it, so it's proven to keep him away, um, more than the fake, which we have the fake one up there right now. That one doesn't really work, but, um, fingers crossed. So, it's been going really well and we're really excited about that. And then just a quick update on the rec plex. Um, kudos to Suzanne Egan because our re, motion for reconsideration of the summary judgment for the Community Preservation Act case, that was wonderful, was denied. So, it's great news. Um, what we'll note, do now is wait for the final judgment that will come from the judge. Um, you know, not that many cases go through summary judgment and get, um, dismissed in that manner. So, i- it's really amazing. She did a great job, a great job on it. Um, and in the meantime, we have consulted with our architect just to start drafting bid docs because we are now down to just the land court case. So, fingers crossed as we're moving along.
Senior Center moving forward.
Yeah, and we have the Fields project, hopefully.
Well, started around the same time.
And we signed the contract with Mass Audubon. Right? So, that was really exciting. I almost forgot about that. So, that was really exciting. So, we're moving along.
Moving along. Things are opening up. Things are looking good, so.
Twelve days and then the new fiscal year.
Okay.
July is a good, all good stuff coming out of the meeting, so.
Excellent. Are you all done?
Yeah.
Okay, I have, uh, two things. Um, it's Dee's birthday today. She's probably out to dinner or something, but wishing her a happy birthday. And we have another birthday girl tomorrow.
Yep, me and Dee. Happy birthday.
That's amazing. You're a day apart.
We share an anniversary, not with each other. So, yeah, who knew, right?
Ended up.
Just to, actually, you know, my question, I was just thinking about this with the, uh, the dogs in the pond. Uh, you know, with the geese, dealing with the geese. We have a number of playing fields in town where the just, it's just horrendous. In particular, Foster's, it's just, and it's, I'm wondering if there could be some-
We could run Gibbs there too. No, but, yeah, I mean, I don't see why not, especially since school's not in session right now, right? Because Gibbs is, is signed to the SRO, so, um, certainly.
Yeah, that's a great thing, but I'm just wondering, you know, okay, maybe longer term and, you know, this isn't the form for it necessarily, but, uh, it, it's just, it's just not healthy.
No.
And there's so many kids that play on those fields. And on top of that, it's just gross.
The dogs work.
Not too good for your shoes either.
So.
The only thing is, they would need a pass because dogs are not supposed to be on playing fields. So, you'd have to, you'd have to have a badge or something.
He wears a, a polo coat.
Yeah.
Yeah, so everybody knows he's the real deal.
That is terrific.
Like.
Appreciate that.
Appreciate you bringing that up because every time we go out to Sharknery, it's Jackson mentions it, but, to play baseball.
Yeah.
It's definitely something the kids talk about.
They talk about it a lot, so.
I'm sure Gibbs would be thrilled.
I want to circle back to, um, something Dick mentioned earlier and just throw out there that we do have openings on many different boards. And so, for everybody out there watching this, uh, please apply. Look and see what's open and send in an application and, um, we, our community relies very heavily on volunteer support. And so, we're always appreciative for anyone who wants to get involved, so.
Maybe the subcommittee should have a table at National Night Out. We at least could have resumes and forms. Be good.
Good idea. And if you can, probably set one up next to the clerks.
And Chair?
Because they usually have-
Chairs of all those committees? Help these guys out a little bit, right?
Send some people over.
A little bit or two. Thanks.
Anybody else? No, no. All right. Well, our next meeting is August ninth, uh, seven PM, same place. And, uh, other than that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you so much.